This conference will now be recorded.
The American flag for us, we will have the pledge of allegiance before we start.
Yep.
Okay, the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all. Yep.
Okay. Caller two, if you would just identify who you are.
Right here, right me, me, do you talk to me right now, Mr. Vitale?
No, no, we have, we have, we know who you are, we know your name.
Okay, okay.
So is that Linda? Yes.
Okay, alright. So we just, we just like to know who's there and what have you. So we're gonna, we're gonna start with hearing number. Let's see. Mister Marino, 2020-028 is the hearing number. And that is for our-
Boy, I've got three, I've got three properties here, I don't know which one-
I know, that's 1/13.
Oh yeah, hearing number is 2020-029.
We're gonna start with 028.
Okay, wait a minute, 0-
1/13 North Turnpike. I am going to swear you in, and that will cover the three hearings, alright?
Alright, alright.
So I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief. You do?
I do, so have me God.
Okay, very good. Okay, so when was the last, were you here not too long ago with this property?
No, not at all, I haven't seen you guys in a long time.
Okay, alright, I just, I'm just checking. So you, you put a market value of $20,000 on, is that right? $20,000.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Okay, and the town currently has a market value of $49,700 on the property. Is that correct?
I, you know, I gotta look for it, but I, you got it right in front of you.
That is correct, Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Yes, as Mr. Jackson knows, that's it, yep.
Yeah. So tell us, tell us why you feel its value is only $20,000.
Okay, I, I have in a piece of paper here that the property type says commercial. But the property type is DD, Design District. It's in the corner of North Turnpike Road and Ridge Land. Closest street you have the water pump. With the Design District, you gotta stay so many feet away from the right, so many feet away from the left. If you do build there, you're gonna put a very small building. And special with the situation we're in now, you people have it for commercial, but it's actually it's a DD, Design District. Nobody wants to go like in the middle of nowhere, you know, you know with the, Mister Vitale, you're a wonderful resident, I'm pretty sure you're familiar with the, with the site. And it's hard to make it go, I've been having this property for the past long time, I don't remember, cannot tell you a number because I won't be accurate, but I own it for a long time. I wasn't, I tried to render, to lease it, nobody can, everybody went out empty entered because the town planner didn't, don't allow this, don't allow that. And I own the property to there, it just, you know, just pay taxes on it. And especially with the pandemic that we incurred right now and commercial property decrease in value and a lot of empty stores, and I don't have to tell you all the restaurants, most likely our business and I have another property that I have been correct collector rent for the past four months and I don't wanna, and I understand they just, they can't afford to pay and if I evict them, they'll be empty, so I'd rather make believe that's occupied, but I don't get nothing. So, because if they move and I put a, for rent sign, they're gonna be for, nobody's gonna render. I don't have, you know, I hope you guys know what's going on right now unfortunately. Let's hope that we go back to normal with the help of God and that things get better. I have nothing to do, I can't do nothing right now with the property, period. Nothing.
Mister Jackson, I see this property was assessed at $5,000 and it increased to $34,800. I mean, I don't know, $5,000, what was it under when it was only valued at $5,000?
So for years, Mister Chairman, this property flew below the radar, if you will, seltzered the cracks, be another way to put it, was believed at one time to be not buildable, unbuildable. And this time around, when the reevaluation came through, it came to light that we should look closer at it, we did, we determined that it's very difficult to build, as Mister Marino stated, you have to put a very small building, has a small building envelope, otherwise you will need variances and other types of special approvals in order to really fully develop the site. That being said, we value it as it is, in other words, a normal building would be $100,000 or thereabouts. This one here, we adjusted, adjusted on the condition factor, reduced it by 35% of what we normally would have assessed it for, to account for the fact that it can only have a very small building.
Is it commercial or is it, or it, what's on?
Design District 4, so it is buildable, but it's just a matter of finding the right type of improvement to place on that lot.
But, but buildable as, as commercial on North Turnpike?
Well, within the Design District, I'd have to double check that, but anything that would be allowed in the Design District, I think that may include residential, I'm not, I'm not quite sure, but the Design District allows a fair amount of flexibility-
Okay.
-as opposed to strictly just commercial.
Nope, no, 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 no. If you may speak, Mister Vitale, I'm just waiting for you singing, singing.
Wait for me to what?
If you give me your K, I can respond to me.
Oh yeah, yeah, you can respond, please, please.
Yeah, you know, that, you cannot build a house there, in order to build a house, it's gotta be residential. There, on the Design District, they allow you rooming houses. In order to build a residential house on DD, you have to go for a variance to make it commer, residential. And it won't be a good site to build a house, you're a, you're a wonderful resident, you know, with a lattice, that's on residential part. On a commercial part, when you put a little building in the middle of nowhere, where a closest street from the, the town property that they, Department of Public Works, they used to took down the cement and crushed stone and stuff, who's gonna go there? So I just have to, keep it, I'm 74 years old, I know how long I can keep it and hopefully in the future, they change the zoning or something. Design District, you cannot build a house, even if you change it to residential, it won't be a site where you can put a nice residential house there. In the corner of Ridge Land and North Turnpike, you have the water pump right next to you, you have trailer park right behind you, the Sony Acres, whatever, it's a bunch of trailer parks, and you have trailer parks on closest street. And also, I think it's wetlands too, when the, when the river overflows, there's water going to, anyway.
Well, so, I mean-
Alright.
For speculation value, somewhere out in the future, it's gonna, it's gonna have a value. Today, we know, you know, the situation, it's certainly, you know, before you had an, you had an assessed value of $5,000, you know, which put a market value on it of, you know, $7,000, I mean, that's not-
I understand.
That, that's not correct, I mean, it's worth, it's worth certainly more than that.
But that property, that land, it doesn't bring me income. I have to, I have to add my, I'm in insurance in case somebody trespasses and gets hurt, I have to pay insurance, I have to pay taxes, and there's nothing I can do about it, nothing I could do prior, and nothing I can do special now, nothing you can do with it.
Yeah.
I already told you that it would be no good for the residential, putting a small building in the middle of nowhere, I don't know who the hell is gonna render, I'm in this situation, you guys, pretty sure you know more than me and you people have a better judgment than me, I just don't wanna interfere with the-
I mean, we had, we had to do something because, you know, assessed at 5,000 is just not-
I understand, I understand, but I mean, if I could get some money out of there, if I could get some income, I put it for rent, I gave it to a real estate many times, and always come out empty ended. Now we got a pandemic, things go up, you know, how are you gonna survive that way?
So currently-
Well, anyway, I mean, but I, get on then.
Currently, it's, you know, market value the town has on it of 49.7, you know, like Mister Jackson said, it, it could be worth a lot more than that, if, if the right thing, the right time, what have you, I mean, I think we, we've applied the fair doctrine right now for, you know, what's going on in, in the world with the pandemic and rentals and leases like that, I, I think maybe we could give you, you know, a little bit of relief from the 49.7. Do I hear any of the members with, with possible, you know, motion concerning that?
Yeah, make a motion to reduce the market value to $40,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so that's, that's 20-
$28,000 assessed.
Correct, 40,000 market value. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna move on-
The only one that can help possibly, Mister Vitale, would be Mister Bonamico, tell him to put a bank there. Nice little bank, and the people can go and bank their money and everything. Mister Jackson got a lot of it, so he could put, be closer to where Mister Jackson lives.
Drive up ATM.
Yeah, tell Mister, Mister Bonamico, he can do that. It'd be good for the town and it'd be for me, and then, and then you can go even higher on the frigging taxes. At least I have money, some money to pay with, but right now, what I'm gonna pay with, we-
Okay, we're gonna move on to your next application, 2020-029. And that is-
Alright.
120 Constitution Street.
Right.
You're at 150,000, you say that your, your appeal is based because the taxes are too high, so let's, let's see where we are.
Yes, Mister Vitale.
So, uh, prior, prior assessment was 131,300. And now the assessment is 141,900.
Yep.
Which puts a market value of 202,714,000 on the property. You, you say it's only worth 150. So let me-
Alright, the, let me tell you something about what's going on with that, with that house.
Okay.
The lady on the first floor, she has cancer, and I'm beat behind on the rent about, about three months, I don't have the heart to, you can even evict them, evict them, and I don't know what to, what to say. The lady on the second floor, it's a single mom with a, with a son, and she doesn't work full time, part time, and she's also behind on the rent, I mean, I understand that the life has gotta go on, things go up, but I'm in a situation, I'll be honest with you, Mister Vitale, that right now, we go through this pandemic, and not everybody, everybody's hurting.
Yeah, I mean-
And with the law that you cannot evict them because of the pandemic, I have a tenant, they hasn't paid rent since August, knowing this house and another house. And today, the lady that lives on the second floor, I'm talking about 115 South Cal, South Calonie Road, Mister Jackson knows there, she called the cops because she was screaming and banging on the ground, and the cops went there, she thought he was killing somebody, and they went there and after the guy was on drugs and they, you know, we live in a very, very difficult times, so the government has got the right to go up on the rent and everything, and the taxes and everything, but the landlords right now, they hurting bad. Are you gonna survive that way, I just don't know. And I'm not the judge, you guys can do what's best, that's all.
Yeah, we, we understand that, we all are watching that very closely, anybody, you know, that's-
Yeah, we are in a best, best situation.
But if we go to the value of the house, alright, in today's market, a two-family house on Constitution Street, at 202,000 market value, that, that's, that's a fair price. I mean, prior to the last revale, the house had a, had a value of about 188,000, so that's a $14,000 increase in-
I said, that's much, that's a little too much. I see other people nearby, they have an increase of 5,000, 6,000, I don't understand why 15,000, almost 15,000 that house, the house has got 1400 square feet, 700 square feet on the second floor, and 700 square feet on the first floor, together it's 1400 square feet. It's cheap made, it's in the corner, it's got wetlands, you got the Constitution condominium right next to it. I mean, if you had a property that you just want at 5,000, I don't understand why mine had to go up 15,000 all at once. I, I mean, I don't know, maybe, but I'm not an assessor, I'm not a, you guys ain't the government, and the government is for the people, and the people gotta, it's for the government, and we all gotta, we all gotta pitch in, but whatever happens, it happens. I cannot judge.
Correct, and thank you for that, that, you know.
Well, this is it, that's what it is.
I mean, you know, the revale based upon prices of houses of October 1st of 2020 have gone up, I mean, it just, just, they've gone up, but-
I just can't go up on the rent, and they couldn't even pay what, what they'd be paying before, how can I go up, I can't go up. Usually the way it works, when the government go up on the, on the taxes, the landlord goes up on the, on the tenant.
Correct.
But I can't go up, you can check with them, I just can't go up. One lady got cancer, the other one doesn't work full time, she's a, she's a mother of a child, I don't know, alright, you-
I understand, but, so, you know, we, we went up and, and we'll, we've, thank you for your appeal, we've listened, we, you know, calculated how much it went up, and maybe the board has some recommendation to-
Mister Chairman, I have a, a motion to reduce the market value to 193,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Alright, Mister Vitale, I, you, you-
We have, we have-
I have my trust in you people, you people represent the government, and this government here is the best in the world, everybody wants to come in. I came in here in 1966, but I have roots, my grandfather spoke to work in the subways in New York, I had two uncles dying in World War II, a cousin dying in Vietnam, I squared my, my daughter, she's in the grave, I tried to enlist to, when it was the Vietnam War, they didn't take me because I was too old. But I, I am an American, 100% American, I want you to know that, I have a little accent, that's okay, little, little, I have a little accent. The Italian people have been pioneers in this land, we here to build, and make, make this country better.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna, this is your last one, right, number, you have three?
Yeah, I got another one, two, yeah.
Oh, there's another one, okay, so we're, we're gonna do hearing 2020-030.
Alright.
The address is 40 North Turnpike Road, Wallingford, okay?
Yep, yes, sir.
You have put a market value of 180,000 on it, and currently-
I put 180? I don't know, I don't remember, I gotta tell you, I don't remember.
You did 40 North Turnpike, 180, and- and, and the town's market value was 251,600. So, but prior to the revale, prior to the revale, the house was 230,428. So again, I mean, the house has gone up,
Alright.
21,000.
Yeah.
Okay, but it's not, it's, I mean, it was valued at more than 180 before, so-
I understand. Mister Vitale, this, you, you're a wonderful resident, and I live right on Route 115, the corner of Stetson Street. I hope that the, the, the town, the state will put a lie here. In this house here, when I get out of the house, I can't get in the, in the Turnpike right away, the traffic is unbearable. Look like I, I live right outside. It's not, it's not a pleasant place for you to live in, believe me. I, I, years ago, I rented it, I had trouble renting it, so I decided to move in, because that's the only way you get ahead in life. You know, you, 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 you suffer in a way, and you have a, the other property, I could have lived in a, in a Constitution Street and rented here, but it's more rentable Constitution Street because the location isn't here. I wish they put a lie here one of those days because it's unbelievable, you can't get on Route 150 and go downtown from here right away, I have to take my time, and sometimes you wait 10, 15 minutes to get out. What can I say, you guys, you know, you know, you guys know where the property is, you guys have a better judgment than I do, and I think it was too much, the increase. I mean, I can see a nice residential, and yet, and it's, I cannot make this place commercial because it's in the corner of Stetson. And when you have, when your house that's on a commercial property, on a commercial street, and it's in the corner, they will never make you convert into commercial, which makes sense, because that, if you make it, if you, that turns this out commercial, will ruin, will ruin the residential street that's Stetson Street, so that can never be made commercial. So I'm kind of forced to live here, in order to make ends meet. And it's not, as a resident, as you see, it says residential, and I am on Route 150 and it's residential, you know, to go up at $20,000 at once in, as a residential, that's the national residential area I can see there, but on Route 150, I, I just, in my opinion anyway, which doesn't mean it makes me right, you have Mister Jackson there, which is a very, very, very knowledgeable gentleman, you have Mister Bonamico, and Mister Avery, you guys use your judgment. I live in a commercial, and I'm, and I, and the property type, it's residential. Going up, going up on a residential, like if it would have been South Main or a better street like South Willsey, North Willsey, maybe yes, but go up from that much on Route 150, for a residential, you know, I think it's just, it's too much, I think. But then where am I, I'm a, I'm a soldier. You're the captain, Mister Vitale.
I, I think the board members have reviewed, have listened, they understand where your house is, they, they understand what you've said. Do I hear any recommendations from the board?
Mister Chairman, I make a recommendation, motion to reduce the market value to 239,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so you have one more? No.
Uh, no, not the one I, I, let's stop here, no.
You only have three?
Yes, I have three, yeah.
Okay, so hopefully, you're able to do something with that property, hopefully your tenants are capable of doing more to help pay the rent. And we thank you for, you know, your appeals, and we, you know, we understand your situation, so.
Mister Vitale and members of the board, Mister Jackson, my regards to all of you, and thank you for listening, thank you for listening to me, and thank you very much for what you was able to do.
Thank you.
And I, I beg you, please try to stay safe, where the meds can get a vaccine when it comes. Stay alive, life is beautiful.
Yeah, thank you, you'll be getting paperwork from the assessor's office.
Thank you, Mister Vitale, how old are you now, Mister Vitale, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be not, and I'm how old are you?
I'll be 65 in July.
You're still a young man, God. I'll be 74 in October, and I don't wanna die here, I don't wanna die. I'll be seventy-four in October and I don't want to die here. I don't want to die.
No, you're not going.
I get up in the morning. Life is beautiful.
Yes. Okay, we have somebody waiting for their turn, so have a good evening.
Tom, I said, I told them I said hello too. Bye-bye.
Goodbye. Okay, so. Let's back up. Thank you for waiting. I think we got to back up to. Hearing number twenty twenty dash zero three six.
Hello?
Linda Moils.
Yes.
So I'm gonna swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
I do.
Thank you. Okay? So this is concerning your home at thirty-one Hickory Street, Kirkery Court. You've placed a market value of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on it. Classified as low income, shouldn't appreciate at a higher rate than other properties at every revaluation. So, Mr. Jackson, I'm gonna, have you explain a little bit. The calculation. For this?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, yeah, so within this development. There are types of homes. There are low income homes which are restricted. For sale, two persons of low income, and then there are moderate income homes. Restricted to sale to persons of moderate income, and then there are market rate homes that can sell at, you know, whatever the market bear. Now, these homes come with a deed restriction that lasts for fifty years. So they cannot sell for any more than that deed restriction allows. This case. Affordable low income. There is a formula that we apply in determining the maximum, and that's the key word. Maximum allowable sale price for this home. According to the formula, the formula is part of the deed restriction. Maximum amount this house could sell for is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred dollars. Now, even if someone wanted to pay more, Miss Moils couldn't sell it for more than that. So that's the maximum amount. Now, what you also have to understand, and Miss Moils will tell you more about it, I suppose she can tell you more about her house. Than anyone else would know. But if there are defects within the property, if there are other factors, someone might have a wet basement or they may have other problems with the property. That even affect the value even below that maximum amount. So, one seventy-nine?
So, so as it is right now at one eighty-three nine, that number is too high.
We're already over the maximum, just based on the formula alone, so certainly some sort of adjustment should be considered.
So, so already, you know, we're going to adjust. The value to one.
It should be no more than one seventy-nine three.
Yeah, okay, yeah, when I just, I just.
Then consider if there are other factors, then that's up to the board to consider.
Yeah, one seventy-nine three is what the market value is going to be. On the property. The prior year. It was, the prior revale was one sixty-five five seventy-one. Okay, so. What is the condition of your, of your home? I mean, we've already, you know, we're gonna take it down to one seventy-nine, so tell us, tell us a little bit more.
Okay, so first of all, I considered the increase last time. Appealable, you know, my fault if I didn't. And I also want to say that in general, I know I'm restricted to this formula, but I feel the need to say that. Um, in general, condos, this is considered a condo, a freestanding condo. And condos didn't go up at the same rate as this unit, you know, these low income affordable units did. The moderate units went up at exactly the same assessment value. Not same percentage, but same assessment dollars. And the market rate units went down. In, you know, in this complex.
I, you know, again. Do you have any of that information? I don't, I don't, I don't have the market value for all the units in there. I mean, you're, you're saying that, but, you know.
Yeah, I know, I know. I realize I should have. And I had intended to today and I didn't do it. Back to the condition, I have a major crack in my foundation from the inside to the outside. I emailed you late this afternoon. I emailed the three of you pictures. And, you know, the estimated cost of repair, you know, and it, I have water in the basement for that reason. I have another crack on the other side. That's not as severe, but water does come in there also.
So, Mr. Jackson, I mean, I don't, again, correct, there's. Moderate low income units, there's normal, you know, units over there. I mean. Have they gone up varying? Have they gone up? Equally? I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't have a comps out of, out of the, you know, development to say.
So, so, you know, the low and moderate, we just simply follow the formula. Market rate of condos may come down because they may have been considerably higher last time around. I mean, I, I'm just speculating on that. I don't have any.
Yeah.
Example to present tonight, but I'm just giving you a reason why they may have come down. I think more important factor, if it's more important, is this. This, you know, the crack in the foundation, that's. I am aware of that.
Condition of her actual unit has, yeah, will have bearing.
I mean, start at one seventy-nine three and then adjust for, if you feel it's appropriate to adjust for that crack, then I think that would be. Appropriate way to go. More important.
Okay. Okay, without. Without having, you know, comps and things like, you know, things of that nature, I think we. You know, we'll give you some relief on condition.
Okay.
Do I hear any board member with? A recommendation?
I make a motion to reduce the market value to one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay?
Okay, I'll see you next year, okay?
You only get one time in five years, so, in a revale, so.
I disagree.
Mr. Jackson? One appeal in the revale period?
Correct, unless there's something material, if we change the assessment for some reason, then they could come back. If there's a new owner, they could come back, but barring any unforeseen changes, one shot, five-year revales.
So. Okay, we'll send you, we'll send you the updated documentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. I will return shortly. See, and there's nobody in the waiting room.
Might start making some calls and get people coming in here.
You, Shelby, sometimes we lose you.
Oh.
I don't know why that is. You go in and out.
I'm gonna have to buy a microphone for this thing, I guess.
Yeah. Sometimes, you know, in the sentence, you're, you're, you're good and then you fade and then you come back, you know, so I don't. Sounds like you, you don't move anywhere, but it sounds like you go away from it and then you come back, but you don't really.
Yeah.
All right, I'll be back.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
Am I supposed to be able to see you?
You should be able to.
Um. Am I supposed to be able to see you guys as well? I'm on the phone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on a phone too.
We only know that you're caller three and caller four. Maybe, I'm not sure from the phone you can see or not. So.
This is her, yeah.
So who, who's caller three, you know?
Robert Cordova.
Okay. All right, so caller three, we're gonna, we're gonna go with next and then. What was caller four is, oh, Angela. Okay, then we'll go, then we'll go with you. So let me find. Robert Cordova, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, hearing number twenty twenty dash one six two. Robert Cordova, Jr. I'm gonna swear you in. So I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is express gutters. What market value do you apply to the personal property? You have fifteen hundred dollars. Didn't get the twenty twenty personal property affidavit submitted in time. This is my first time owning a business. So you have original cost of two thousand dollars, depreciated cost of fifteen hundred dollars. The town, because you didn't file. Put an assessed value of the property at five thousand dollars because you didn't file. There's a twenty-five percent penalty. That's a state statute penalty. So. File the twenty twenty declaration with appeal. Mr. Jackson, because he filed. Even though he's filed late. And he filed with a, with a value of fifteen hundred dollars, actual value. How does, how does that affect what? He was assessed at by the assessor's office?
All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, another talent on the phone. I missed the first part of your question. Missed the first part of your question, Tom.
Correct. We, the town has his assessed value of equipment sixty-two fifty based upon. Estimated startup cost. But since he's filed. The declaration at fifteen hundred dollars.
What would be up to the board to determine, you know, if they want to go with our estimate or with his actual filing? My only question is, does he have one of those seamless gutter machines and what is the cost? What's the value of that?
Yeah, that, if I'm able to talk, then I can explain that if you'd like.
Correct. You are, you are able to talk, no problem.
That, that's actually what I do have is a seamless gutter machine, which I did buy used and that's what a thousand dollars of the fifteen hundred went for. I was, what had happened was I bought that machine when I started the business. And I bought that off of Craigslist for one thousand dollars. The other five hundred is from the equipment that I bought.
Do you have any receipts for that? I mean, that.
For the, for the machine that I purchased?
For the gutter machine.
I bought it off Craigslist. It was, it was a Craigslist ad that was on there when I had started. I had just purchased it. I didn't get, the only thing I had gotten was a bill of sale, which I had brought down when I had gotten the gutter machine established with DMV. They had just told, like, the date and the time that I had bought it for, showing that there wasn't anything on there, like a actual, like, receipt from a store or anything.
Is this is registered with DMV because it's a trailer? Is that why?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we've assessed it based on our estimate sixty-two fifty, including a penalty. If you, if the board wants to consider what was actually filed. Be. An assessment of twenty-one hundred, including the penalty.
Can you, can you just repeat that? The twenty-one hundred is.
Twenty-one hundred includes the twenty-five percent penalty.
That's based upon the fifteen hundred dollar declaration and a twenty-five percent penalty?
Yes, that's correct.
You know, again, thousand dollars for a gutter. Machine. Seems like a extremely good price.
It was extremely used. I, it's about twenty-two years old, I believe. I mean, it's, I literally got this as a startup business for myself, my first business, and, I mean, I've had nothing but trouble with it anyway, seeing as I couldn't even work. For ninety percent of COVID when I opened my business.
And the, and the remaining five hundred dollars is what? Miscellaneous hand tools, ladders? If you got a thousand in the gutter machine, you got five hundred dollars in. Correct? Did we lose you? No, you're muted. No, you're not. No, how come? Hey there, Robert?
Cordova, can you hear us?
Hello? Hello? The screen said that he left. Who's screen? Our screen. He'll probably try to get back in. So again, Mr. Jackson, when we're talking about this assessed value, we have been putting him down as market value. So, correct, is that where the personal property has been?
Yes, well, we made an estimate based upon similar other property, other businesses.
Hello?
Yeah, I heard you guys the whole time. For some reason, it kicked me out. I heard you guys asking if I was here. I heard everything of what you guys said. I never hung up. I only hung up when you guys couldn't hear me after that.
Okay, yeah, you're still, you're still show here as.
What I was, what I was explaining before it went muted is that with the tools that I had gotten, I had gotten two ladders received from family. That was that, and then the rest of the DeWalt tools was from the 500 that I had told you guys. Those were the tools that I actually purchased. I didn't get, because this is my startup business. I had family members give me tools such as two ladders. Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah, we lost you a little bit.
All right, I was saying, I don't know, it keeps saying muted and unmuted on my side, so somebody on that side muting or unmuting it, because it comes up with somebody saying that, but what I was saying was.
Did you call in on another line? Because I've got another caller.
Yeah, he's.
Lining up with his name.
That would have been probably the first call when I called, but I hung the phone up. This is my same number.
Yeah, he's caller, he's caller seven now.
Okay.
Is it okay for me to continue talking?
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, yes. So what I was saying was that when I started the business, it was right before COVID. COVID came, I was given tape measures, two ladders, and a couple of other miscellaneous tools for my business from family members and friends that were helping me start up. The 500 is from what I purchased actually from Home Depot for tools. That was two screw guns, the charging ports, a couple of saws, pencils, and stuff like that. That's why it originated to 500 for the tools.
Okay.
Like, I, I'm a single father, and I live at my address that's located on my business, 52 Claremont in Wallingford. That's why I thought when I had first read it, the paper that it came in, I thought that they were doing that because of the actual owner of this house, my landlord, because he has trucks and stuff too, so I didn't know if that's why they had made it such a bigger price compared to what mine actually is, because I only have a small trailer, the machine, and a couple of tools. I only did three jobs this whole year from being from COVID, and I never even knew that I could file for, like, the relief funds or anything like that. I literally lost a lot of money that I invested in the materials this year, and I, like, I really haven't made anything. I did three small jobs, and that was just me starting up this year. I mean, like I said, that was just the tools and the trailer, which I purchased off of Craigslist from somebody who was in the business for over 20 years, and they bought two more trucks. That's why I was able to purchase the trailer with the machine for $1,000.
Okay. Okay, so.
And that's also why I didn't know I had to file, because, like I said, this is my first time owning a business. I never knew that I had to, like, file a declaration. This is all new to me. You know, I'm 28. I've worked for companies my whole life, and this is my first year of going on my own. If I had known I had to file anything, I would have had it filed, which is why when I had the actual paper come to my house, I immediately filed it and brought it down to the town hall. I never received the first one. I didn't know how to go about filing and having a declaration and stuff like that. Otherwise, I would have had it done prior to, you know, this having to be done.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, so what you had said was the assessed value with the declaration and the penalty, the assessed value was $2,100.
That's correct, that's correct.
So, the assessed value of $2,100 turns into a market value of $3,000. You would pay the tax on the $2,100, which is your declaration, plus the penalty, which is, again, state, state statute. So you're looking at a total here of approximately $60, you know. So do I hear, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to reduce the assessed value to $2,100, which equates to a market value of $3,000 with penalty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you'll, you'll be notified by a letter from the assessor's office. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you guys.
Okay, the next year, make sure that, you know, paperwork.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask. So when does that need to be in, is it yearly by a specific time?
Mr. Jackson, it's gotta be, what, November?
Each year by November 1st. Declarations are on, online on the town's website. We'll try to mail you one, but it is your responsibility to make sure it's filed properly. You need help, give us a call.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your guys' time. I'll make sure to have that for November of next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. Have a wonderful night.
You too, bud.
Bye-bye.
Okay. So we have caller five.
Caller five, please state your name.
Please tell us who you are.
I don't know. Am I five?
Yes.
Okay, I'm five. It's Ruth Harris.
Okay.
Okay.
So let me, let me just find your, your paperwork. Okay, Ruth Harris, 44 Fair Street.
Right.
Okay, I, I'm going to swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief. This is personal property. You have put a market value of $100 on office equipment.
Yes.
Please, please tell us what.
What's there? I have, well, I do counseling, and so the only thing that I have there is a couch and a chair. I have a small desk, and I have a very old computer that I don't even use, but I have it there. And I've been there for 35 years. The computer I've had for about 15 years at least. And the furniture I've had, some of it, the chair I've had for, I'm gonna say 20 years, almost since I moved to the, to Fair Street. And so that's what I have.
Okay.
I had, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I, I think the town has it assessed at $500. You have a market value of $100. You have it assessed at $70.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Yep.
I don't see any paperwork on the decoration of what the actual list of equipment is. You did file though, right? You, you filed.
I did, I did, yes. I brought it down. Yep.
Yeah, there's no paperwork here to.
Hmm. I did bring it down. I dropped it off, oh gosh, a couple of weeks ago. She told me to make sure I had it in before Friday, and I did. I brought it this Thursday before that, you know, ending date.
Our assessed value, 500. So somewhere on file, we have, we have paperwork that has your list of equipment, and it's assessed at $500. Now, now you which is like $15 in taxes.
Okay.
So let's, do I hear a motion from the board? Do you see, Mr., is that you, Mr. Jackson, looking for a list?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so I'm just showing you what we have here for documentation, I guess.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just don't, I just don't see a list of, you know.
You're right.
Prior declaration or list of anything.
Yeah, I, I dropped it off. I don't know what to say. I dropped it off.
Yeah, we have it dropped off on March 1st.
Okay, yep, that sounds right. Good.
So based upon that list.
She declared $100.
She declared $100.
Right.
But it says the declaration doesn't include the computer or supplies as prior declarations. So.
Um, okay.
That's the note I have, so.
That's what you have? Yeah, okay.
Spoke with Mrs., spoke with Ms. Harris, 3121, and she filed declaration same day, but declaration doesn't include computer or supplies as prior declarations. So.
I don't know. Well, I'm getting ready to retire, so I'm not buying a lot of stuff anyway. I'm just using up what I've had. Yeah, yeah.
So when, when, when we calculated this, this was based on prior declarations of $500.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion from, from the board?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, no change.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, we'll be, we'll be notifying you, but again, your, your tax liability is like $15.
Okay, that's fine, and I appreciate your time on it. Thank you very much. Next year, I'll get it in on time, if I'm still working. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, take care. Bye-bye.
Okay. Again, I, caller six, I'm sorry, I'm not sure who, who that is. Somebody unmute and, and.
I'll, I'll unmute. Tell me which one, and I'll unmute them.
Caller six, okay, you unmute, yeah. Hello?
Yes, my name is Alejandro Ruiz. I don't know if you am on the number six.
Okay.
Alejandro is number six. I'll, I'll get his name up in a minute.
Number six. Six. Just let me find with, no. What's the name of the company?
It's a Ford Home Improvement, F-O-R-T-E.
Okay. Yeah, because on the list, I don't have your name, so I just have that. Okay. Of course, okay, I did find it. I am going to swear you in.
Mm-hmm.
I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief. Force Home Improvement. You place a market value on your equipment of $1,917. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, $1,900 to, okay. Okay, so. Okay, because you did not file, there's a, there's a 25% penalty. The town, town estimated a value of $3,130 in assessed value, and that was 2,500 assessed and a $630 25% penalty. So the total was Your tax, your taxes to the town would be $91.
Okay.
Based upon that information. But, but go ahead, tell us, tell us what your declaration, you know, entails. You estimated, you know, $1,900. We, we estimated, you know, because we didn't have a filing from, from you, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry for that. It was my first time doing this. I, I don't even know I gotta do this.
You're in no problem.
Yeah, so my tools are like, basically, I got two ladders and a couple, couple more ladders, planks, wood planks for the, I do roofing and repair roofing, so a couple tops. I don't have nothing expensive.
Okay.
Drills, hammers, hand tools. No, nothing, nothing big.
Do you?
Yeah, yeah, and last year I don't work, because the COVID, I was working with my old company full-time, and I made like three or three jobs, two or three jobs last year. I hope this year is getting better, and I can get more tools and everything, but the last year was really, really bad for me.
Okay. Let's see. Let me just check a couple things.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. You know, because of the penalty, we'll, we'll give you a little relief. Because you filed, you filed late, you know, we, we were just estimating. Do I hear a board member with a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reduce the market value to four thousand dollars with an assessed value of two thousand eight hundred.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we, we reduced the assessed value from thirty-one thirty-one thirty to twenty-eight hundred dollars. That'll give you a little bit of relief. Next year, have any questions, come up to the town hall, go to the assessor's office, they'll help you file the paperwork by November first. You know, it has to be filed. So
Okay.
You won't incur the penalty. You have penalties on there that, you know, next year won't be there, so.
Alright.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bye bye.
Bye bye. Okay, Mr. Jackson, if you would unmute, caller eight. Hello?
Hello.
Who, who am I speaking with?
Angela.
And your company is?
Vanity Beauty Barn.
Okay, let me find that. Okay, this is hearing twenty twenty dash one six three. Vanity Beauty Bar. I'm going to swear you in.
Okay.
I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief. You have placed a market value of four thousand six hundred and twenty dollars on the equipment at your business.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Who, who else is speaking? Just so we have that on the record.
My business partner, Bana Azari. I don't know why she's not on the paperwork. I did tell them when I called in about it.
Oh, okay. I mean, that's fine, that's fine. As long as we know that it's Angela Grego. And say the name again.
Bana, B A N A.
Okay.
Last name Azari.
Okay. Alright, you're, that's on record, so we know who, you know, is, so. So go ahead. Currently, the town has a uh, market value, market price of fourteen thousand two eighty-six. Is that correct? Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, I have an assessed value of twelve thousand five hundred. Assessed value of twelve thousand five hundred, including the penalty amount.
So that is, that is seventeen thousand eight fifty-seven. And you filed the twenty twenty declaration with appeal, no supplies listed on declaration. Lease hold improvements not declared. Six thousand dollars in permits. Uh, so this is a new, this is a new business?
Yeah.
Okay. So so go ahead. Do you understand, you know, some of those items that the town, have you been to the town, the assessor's department, talked to them at all or no?
No, when we received the letter, um, you know, we called and spoke with somebody who said to send in an appeal and just to fill out the total cost of what our equipment cost us. So we made a list of the things that we had in there. We did purchase a lot of it from a salon on Instagram that we found that was going out of business. The owner was advertising that her salon was going out, so we went and looked at what she had there. We bought used equipment from her. And then, you know, we bought the, uh, the sinks and like the mirrors from Ikea, nothing crazy. So that's the, you know, when we went through our equipment and we wrote down what it is that we have in there, that's what we wrote down and sent in to you guys.
And this is our first year, so.
Yeah, we never even received anything back in November, which I did call and explain to the woman at the assessor's office when I, you know, when we got this letter, she said that something was sent out to be due in November, but we never even received that.
Okay, um, so maybe Mr. Jackson could explain to you things that in your startup year is affecting, you, you know, the value here. So six thousand dollars in permits. Mr. Jackson, could you explain what that is and we can hear from the appelleants?
Mr. Chairman, so, so that would be leasehold improvements? And just to give an example, by way of example, so they listed a couple of sinks that they had bought, but you also need to include the cost for installation of the plumbing and, and, you know, to make those sinks operational for, for business, for business use. So that's just one example. Uh, so leasehold improvements. And then of course, they've listed out, you know, the mirrors, their various, the beauty stations or whatever. Give me if I didn't call it the right name. Stations.
My, uh, sorry, not to cut you off, but my fiance is a contractor, so he did that work for us for no cost. We pulled the permits with the town for the building permits and to do that stuff, but we didn't have to like pay out a pocket, a pocket for that, for like labor.
But we had to estimate. We didn't know that.
But you estimated the permits when you went to the town hall at six thousand dollars, that it had a value of six thousand dollars? Do you remember that, if you filled in?
What? No.
No, you didn't put a value down. What, what, you had to put a value down to, to know how much you were gonna pay for the building permit.
Anytime we pulled like a permit, it was like fifty dollars, I think, like, or a hundred dollars the most.
That, that's what you paid. And that was based upon how much you estimated the work was gonna cost. So if, if a contractor gave you a, a, a value of four thousand dollars, you know, you would go in and say, I'm doing four thousand dollars worth of work and you would pay pay for a permit based upon that number. That, that's all.
Okay.
You know, you might have paid fifty bucks or a hundred bucks. But that, it's based upon, you know, how much how much you were going to pay to have that work done. So supplies listed on declaration, Mr. Jackson, supplies for stock in the beauty salon products and care. That is taxable. Personal property or, or no?
Oh, yes, yes, but what's taxable, not the full amount, the average monthly supplies that are expended. So for example, if a business were to spend, I'll make it simple, twelve thousand dollars in the course of a year on supplies. Then we would divide that by twelve months and we would assess one thousand dollars for supplies, the average monthly amount.
And is there a penalty here also?
I'm confused.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there is. So we've assessed ten thousand dollars as an estimate and then assigned the penalty of twenty-five hundred for a total of twelve thousand five hundred dollars assessed value.
Okay, so what?
Didn't even cost us that much to open the business.
Yeah. We're a little confused. This is our first time we do something like this.
Correct, correct. Okay. Let me back up a little bit. So when you, when you open the business and you have personal property, you have to file the declaration and, and the value of all those items.
Okay.
By November first.
Okay, but we, um, sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
We signed the lease and it was November, correct?
November of two thousand and nineteen. So we didn't even like open, so, yeah.
Yeah, well, this, we would be talking about filing in November first of twenty twenty.
Okay.
So within, within that year, you know, you, you would
Yeah.
Be, be doing it.
Okay.
And, and, you know, you have you have the list of furniture and fixtures, things of, of that nature. Uh, mirrors, chairs, stations, desks, lighting, shampoo, sinks, uh, what have you. But there's, there's some other costs associated supplies, you know, as Mr. Jackson talked about. The value of, of the installation. Even though you did not pay, you know, there's still value to the business with all of these things to be put together. So but then, and then what happens is because you missed the filing, the state statute says you missed the filing this year, there's a twenty-five percent penalty. So the town, the town is estimating the assessed value of ten thousand dollars. And then there's a twenty-five hundred dollar penalty. Okay, now that's the assessed value. The assessed value is not what the market value is. The market value is, the assessed value is seventy percent of the market value. Alright? Because you'd be, what happens is you pay, you pay the taxes on the assessed value. So currently, the town feels you have fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars, is that? In, in well.
So maybe I can help, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars in market value items. And then so you still with us?
Yeah.
We, we, yeah.
What was your question?
I, I'm just trying to explain.
Okay.
I, I can help a little bit, Mr. Chairman.
Pardon?
I can help out a little bit if you want.
Okay, sure.
So if we take what they declared after the fact based on their actual cost, add to that the six thousand dollars of building permits and an estimate of three hundred and fifty dollars for supplies. The total assessment would be ninety-two hundred and sixty dollars, which is a reduction from our estimate.
Ninety-two sixty with the penalty?
Let me double check, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yes, sir, that includes the penalty.
That is with the penalty.
Is there anything that you guys can do about this penalty since this is our first year?
Unfortunately, the penalty is a state statute and we cannot, as a board, override the twenty-five percent penalty. We, we can provide some relief.
So we're liable to pay ninety-two sixty?
Oh, no, no, no. No, at ninety-two sixty that's the value of the property.
About two hundred and seventy dollars in taxes, roughly.
Yeah, times the mill rate, okay?
Okay.
That we're just trying to determine the value that the mill rate, the mill rate is what's, you multiply times the value, that then equates to the tax. For every thousand dollars in value, the mill, the, the tax rate is twenty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. So.
Okay, and then every year, um, moving forward, when we file this property tax every November, does it stay at that rate of ninety-two sixty or does that change because things depreciate?
So it would change as things depreciate? You would add new assets as you acquire them and you would dispose of assets as you dispose of them?
Okay, so even if we get rid of something, we let you guys know. If we add something, we add something new.
That's right.
Okay, sorry, we're just making sure we understand correctly.
And we're gonna get a bill for this or he said two seventy, right?
So yeah, you send us a bill on the new assessment and what we owe?
In June, you'll get a bill that will be due in July. That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, alright. Yeah, we understand. Thank you.
Okay, so so if we use the assessed value of ninety-two sixty, that has a market value of thirteen thousand two twenty-eight. Mr. Jackson, do, do you want something rounded off here? The, the market value rounded off or?
Just make the, the motion based on the assessed value, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, board members.
Make a motion to reduce the assessed value to nine thousand two hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and when, when you file on time next year, the twenty-five percent penalty will be removed also.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we identify, I think we've got two call, another caller, caller ten. I'd like to find out who that is because I know Chief Appraiser's been trying to get into the meeting.
Unmute caller ten then.
Would that be me? Just said unmuted?
Yes.
Excuse me, OB Cobra Automotive, Virginia Blynn.
Okay.
Okay, okay, Ms. Blynn, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute you again and just be patient. The chairman will call you when your appeal comes up.
Okay, great.
Okay, so why don't we go, I'm not sure who is next. I think it was Thomas.
Rolfs.
Rolfs. Okay. Please unmute him then.
Good evening.
Good evening. So let me just find you here. You're
Control Fluidics?
Fluidics.
So a real simple one, I can give you a quick explanation.
Sure. Hold on, let me find you and swear you in before you get going too.
Oh, okay, no problem.
In front of me a little bit too much, um. Okay, I'm gonna swear you in. Hereby solemnly swear that the testimony about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
I do.
Okay, and, uh, you have misclassified two manufacturing items. Mr. Jackson, do you know anything about this particular appeal? Beforehand or no?
So let me bring you up to speed. Yes. Just give me one moment, Mr. Chairman, if you would. My understanding is that the declaration was filed on time. Is that correct, sir?
It is.
But, but there was a mistake on the declaration on a couple of pieces of equipment that were categorized as taxable. And now the company is filing an amended declaration claiming that that equipment is exempt as manufacturing machinery. The gentleman will correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're correct. It was a, I moved it from section 10 to 13 because it has a five or seven year depreciation schedule.
Okay. And the, and the two pieces of equipment?
Are you?
Go ahead.
So, sorry, interrupted. Uh, yeah, they're used to manufacturing, they're piece of manufacturing equipment purchased in 2020.
Okay. So, Mr. Jackson, I mean, we're just changing the declaration. Is there a this, this is a little different than what, than we because, because of the misclassification.
So technically, they did not file properly on time and therefore, you know, we, we took what they filed as they filed.
Okay. So what that means is you've lost the manufacturing exemption for these two pieces. Is that, is that correct?
So that's the action that we took, Mr. Chairman, but, you know, he has his chance to speak to the board and
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to yeah, I'm just trying to understand, uh, whether he can change it or he, he cannot, uh, change it because it's already been submitted.
So my authority ended on December 15th. It's now in front of the board. I think you have the, you know, the discretion to go either way.
Okay, so let me go through this paperwork a little bit more. These are two Haas machining centers, correct? Is that what you're?
No, no, um, the two inspection equipment, piece of inspection equipment. A Starett ABR and a Brown Sharp CMM.
Okay. There's a lot here, so I, uh, and, and the value of, of those two pieces?
Uh, one was you brought, used at $5,000. The second one was brand new at $42,000. I can point C, a Starett ABR 300 is one of them. And the other one is the next down, Brown and Sharp gauge. Honestly, it's the second time I've ever filled out your form. I did a good job on the first time, but the, the second time I made a, made an error. The form is, uh, difficult to, uh, understand if you haven't done it a few times. I'll be better in the future.
The most manufacturers, you know, have an accountant or someone else do it just to make sure they don't lose out on that exemption.
Yeah, in this case, I'm a business owner and I did it myself.
Alright, so let me just, let me search through this paperwork a little bit more for something.
We're new to town, growing company. Trying to get used to, uh, the local regulations. This is our second facility. We have one in New Hampshire as well.
Okay, so so the current assessed value that is not exempt is $32,350. That's 70% of the value you've placed on those equipment. So, Mr. Jackson, in the recommendations here, it says file amended 2020 declaration with appeal 2040 net assessment. Not sure what that, uh,
Let me find that page.
Page 42 in the back.
File the 2020 declaration with the appeal. The, the net assessment of $2,040. So he's trying to correct his error by including those items as exempt under code 13, resulting in a net assessment of $2,040 instead of $32,350. Claiming it's a clerical error that the accountant listed manufacturing items in code 10, which is taxable, instead of code 13, which would be tax exempt. Because of the filing deadline, we're recommending no change because we have no authority to act beyond the December 15th, uh, date.
But the board does.
I think so.
If it, uh, if interest to the board, um, our key product is medical devices that are used in medical equipment, in particular ventilators. And it's been a busy year for us, uh, and we actually make parts for company in, uh, Bradford, uh, biomedical devices, maybe, excuse me, ventilator. So, uh, you know, we're growing. We've got a lot of opportunity. We hope, uh, Waldenford sees that in a positive light.
Okay, I, um, do you feel inspection equipment is, is that normally exempt?
It's, my accountant has it as a five to seven year depreciation.
Okay. I, I'm just asking that question because
Yeah, sure.
I I don't have exact knowledge of what falls in what bucket, but, uh, you know, I, I think here, uh, as the board, you know, you did file on time. I think your, your best effort was in, um, you know, and you did file an amendment. Do I, do I hear anything from the board?
I think we allow the exemption to, uh, to take place. That would be my motion.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we're gonna allow the, the amendment to the declaration.
Thank you.
Great.
Alright.
Very good.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you.
Take care.
Okay, um, Mr. Assessor Rodolfo, I think was probably next.
Churro, yep.
Sorry, um, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is, uh, Churro's painting?
Yeah, it's me.
Okay, let me just find you here.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief. You do?
Excuse me.
Do you agree?
I can't hear you. Yeah.
Can't hear me?
Yes, no, no, I can't hear you. Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief. So you are being assessed uh, on a, on a vehicle? Is that what you're here for?
Yeah, is, yeah, just for that.
That's not, that's not accurate, Mr. Chairman. Being assessed as a painting company. Not sure what the vehicles are, I'm gonna cross that out.
Okay.
Assessment is for $2,940 for, uh, a business equipment as a painting company.
So you, you have a painting company that has ladders and equipment and, and, uh?
Actually, the first time when I opened this business, I supposed to be working with this company, but I can't get it, get it any jobs in that time. And then we're not working with this company anytime. I just keep the company, the business because I, I have my cars on the, on the business company. And then we're not making any money with this company. I'm working for another company.
Okay, but you, the company is still in business, right?
No, no, I'm not in business. We're not doing any business for the company. Because everything, everything I have it before, I give it to the company I work now.
Let me chime in, Mr. Chairman. He did file on time and he filed zero for assets. And our staff in the assessor's office placed an assessment of 29, I say 2940, 2940 based upon an estimate. He does still show the, uh, businesses being active with the Secretary of State's office. And of course, he has vehicles registered in the name. That's how we picked him up.
Okay, um, so now you filed dissolution of the LLC, but last, last November, it was still, still in business, correct?
No, actually. I mean, the company is active, but I'm not working with the company.
The company is in name only, not?
Exactly, just a name only, but we're not doing any work for that company.
Do you have, still have assets, ladders?
Nope, nothing. I like, uh, everything, I sold everything 10 years ago.
He has, he has this offer company as of March 1st, apparently.
Say that again? I'm, I'm sorry, Mr.
So he has filed with the Secretary of State to dissolve the company as of March 1st.
Yes, I do that because we're not using the company.
Do I, do I hear more motion from the board? I just want to have a question. The, uh, the assets, that there are no assets remaining under the company that, at all?
Nope. I didn't make any money with this company, for the company.
Mr. Chairman, let me make a motion to cancel this account?
Yes, I, I canceled the, um, the company.
So the, the motion is to cancel the, um, assessment on the, on assessed company, assessed account. Right? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're not, you're, you're, uh, you dissolved the company and, uh, you will, um, have no, uh, tax responsibility on the company based upon this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, um, I think Virginia Blynn, uh, we could, I think she was next. So if you can unmute her?
Hello, I can, okay, I'm unmuted.
Okay, what company are you?
Cobra Automotive.
Cobra Automotive, okay. Let me just find
Sure.
paperwork. Okay, so okay, so Cobra, Cobra Automotive, Kurt Vogt.
Correct.
And you are?
Virginia Blynn.
And you are within the organization? Um, are you an owner?
No, I'm his administrative assistant, bookkeeper, insurance, I had jack of all trades. And he sent an email today to your office giving me permission, or telling you people that I had permission. And email went
Okay, alright, that's, that's fine. I'm just, I, that's fine. Mr. Jackson confirmed that, that's all.
Okay.
So I'm gonna swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
I do.
Okay, so uh, you've placed no market value on the, on the property that you're appealing. We have, so we have no idea what you feel it's worth? And, uh?
I sent, no, no, I, I, I sent from our accountant. It was sent to you in October. And then again, it was faxed over and along with the email today, you have a proof of the fax, that the fax was received by your office, that this assessment, this was the application. This was the application and was sent by our accountant's office.
But, but I'm looking, I'm looking at your appeal and you did not fill in that market value. So I, I'm reading the appeal. That's all I'm reading. I'm not reading anything else. What market value does the applicant place on the property? You left it blank. All right.
Oh, gosh, I have no idea what, no.
This is the.
I told him I didn't want to do this. I have no idea, um, I mean, what I've got is.
I'm, I'm just saying, you were, you're appealing to the board, all right, and I have no data to work with because you didn't fill in the, the main, the main item, all right? So let me, let me work with you to figure out where we are, okay?
Because I'm looking at this page five, you know, I've got, I've got the pages from the accountant, so I don't even know where they get that line from. That's why I don't do this. I just send it to the accountant and then send it to you guys.
Okay, because. Because the value.
Excuse me.
That. We have here. All right. Is the market value is twenty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. Furniture fixture and equipment, two thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars, mechanics tools. Five thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars for. EDP equipment. Twenty-four hundred dollars for supplies. And because. For whatever reason. It, it was not registered as being in the, the town hall by the due date. There is a state imposed state statute penalty of twenty-five percent. So that's, that's where we are and. Right now. The total value is thirty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars of market value that. In turn. Is twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and ten dollars of assessed value. So, so. At least now I've established where, you know. What the value is because the appeal doesn't, doesn't say, all right?
Okay.
Okay, so now, now, now go ahead, tell us. You know, I, I've read some of this. Kurt signed original on ten twenty twenty, mailed ten twenty-six or ten twenty-six twenty.
Correct.
Is that you, is that you?
If you go back in history, you can see every year it's done by our accountants and you people get it on time. That's why I had no idea that you never even received it.
Okay.
Normally what I do is I send it certified. This year, I don't know why, I was out with cancer and I came in, it needed to get done, so I just sent it. I didn't send it certified this year. So, you know, I was shocked when we got the, um, you know, the important, the notice of change and all of that for the assessment. I said, wait a second, that, you know, we're being penalized because you didn't get this. But, you know, I sent it and I, and that's why I'm appealing it.
Yeah.
You know, I can't help that it got lost in the mail somewhere. There's a lot of mail I haven't gotten. I, you know, I just. But it taught, I'll tell you what, it taught me a lesson. It will go certified from now on.
Yeah, it's, uh.
Yeah, but like I said, I, I'd been out with cancer and I came in and it was due and I just sent it. And as soon as I got, you know, your letter in the mail, I faxed it right back over.
Yeah. So it looks like. They have filed on time every other year. It looks like we've, we've. Added the penalty this year. To it. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Jackson, that?
That's correct. They file faithfully every year, never had a hitch and this year, she, the, the woman is correct. We've had problems with our mail.
Um.
And it wasn't sent certified.
Yes, I've sent checks out to vendors that have never been received by the vendors. Cost a fortune this year to stop paying on them because I don't even know where they went. But like I said, and, and Mr. Jackson said, I mean, we file faithfully every year and I have an accountant do it because I don't understand all of this. And it's the same accountant that we've had for years.
Who, who mailed it in? Him?
No, I did when I came back. No, they send it, they send it to me. They FedEx it to me or UPS it to me from Hampden to Wallingford and then I get it and, you know, we've got to sign it. And I just stuck it in a Cobra Automotive envelope, a big envelope, and just mailed it. I didn't have time to go to the, to the, um, post office to get a certified letter. I said, I'll get there. It's Wallingford. It's the same town. Where is it gonna go? Oh, yeah. I'd still like to know where it is.
You know, by looking at, at your, your history, what have you, I, I think. The board can, uh, you, you know, make a motion concerning, uh. We can't take the penalty off, but we can, we can. Reduce the. The value of the assessed property and put the penalty back on it because the penalty is a state statute that we are prohibited from removing. So do I hear anything from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reduce the assessed value to nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars plus penalty.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. So what's the total? Assess value with penalty, Carl?
So assessed value. That brings it to a market value of twenty-seven thousand, eight fifty, rounded off to the nearest whole number.
Hang on. Let me double check that, Mr. Brian Miko.
Nineteen five. Times one point two five. Twenty-four, three seventy-five assessed value. Is that?
Twenty-four, three seventy or three eighty rounded off?
The twenty, twenty-four, three eighty as the assessed value.
Yes, sir.
Right, so twenty-four, three eighty. Let me repeat the motion.
Please.
With, with penalty, reduce the, the assessed value to twenty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, so we helped you a little bit.
Okay, so what happens with that twenty-five? I can't believe the state has no provision for something lost in the mail. No, you know what? I really shouldn't be surprised. Um.
That, that.
So does that, now I heard you tell someone else, does that twenty-five hundred come off next year?
Yes.
Or something? I.
The twenty-five percent penalty will not be assessed next year. As long as you put it in a certified.
Right, no, absolutely.
All right. Or drop it off.
Because you get it on time, I won't be assessed. But this, this is a twenty-five, is it a twenty-five hundred dollar fee? Fine?
Twenty-five, twenty-five percent fee.
Twenty-five percent fee, okay.
Okay.
About a little change. Tell them what it is. Sorry, hang on.
Here are the va, the, um. So you got, what was it, twenty-four, three eighty?
Twenty-four, three eighty.
About a hundred and forty dollars.
How much?
Okay.
It's about a hundred and forty dollars.
Penalty.
Approximately late fee. Okay.
But we also did roll back the assessment a little bit to offset.
You rolled the assessment back to twenty-four rather than the twenty-eight. Correct? I want to make sure I'm understanding this.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. All right, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. You too. Bye-bye.
Okay, uh. Caller eleven, I guess. You would unmute him, okay? Caller eleven. Could you identify yourself, please?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, I didn't know what caller number it was. I apologize.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Eric Higgins, Gen X Motors.
Okay, let me just find your. Okay, I'm gonna swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
I do, so help me God.
Okay. All right, so, uh. All right, you place a market value on the property at five thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars with a question mark, so.
I did, because as you can see with my attached letter, we had an accountant who we, we claimed gross negligence against for the last four years. I'm the one who submitted the first property tax assessment in two thousand and seventeen, and he has done nothing since. Our new accountant has suggested that I follow up with this year's, you know. Follow up with you trying to straighten it all out, and here we are.
Okay. Okay, so.
What happened? Go ahead, sorry.
No, no, I, I'm just. So you have not filed since twenty-seventeen, is that?
That's correct. And I know the, the twenty-five percent increase each year, I only found about that this year when we got a letter from the town, which is what prompted my action. So I reassessed what we had and then it came back. With a higher assessed value on one of our vehicles that we have, and that's the, you know, apparently that's a, a higher assessed value than what I had placed on it. So that's why I'm, that's why I'm here.
Okay, so. The buildup of. Assessment and penalty. We're, we're currently at eight thousand, one hundred and ten dollars.
Okay.
All right, that's, is that correct, Mr. Jackson? That's, that's where we are today?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So let's. That's a tax liability. Of two hundred and thirty-six dollars. That's, that's where you are right now, and that will clean up. The last four years of. Penalties and, and assessment, correct?
Okay, the, the, I'm fine with that. The only concern I have is the, the truck that I claimed is coming up at, with an NADA value of seventy-five hundred dollars. And we bought the truck for two thousand dollars and it's, you know, it's just a rusty piece of shit that we use as like a, a runaround truck that is now rusting into the ground with two hundred and eighty thousand miles on it. So, you know, my only.
Be honest with you right now, I mean, that, that, that's, you have not filed an appeal, right? That's not involved in this, correct, Mr. Jackson?
No, it is, Mr. Chairman. It is. If you look on the declaration under code nine, unregistered vehicles, so it's a vehicle that they use, probably puts a dealer plate on it. The gentleman could better explain it.
Yes.
We have it as unregistered.
Okay, but so you're not paying, you're not, you're not, uh, in the assessed value of eight thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. Does not include seven, right?
That's correct. It does not include that. If we included the actual NADA value, his, his assessment would go up from the eighty-one hundred, not go down.
That's, that's what I'm saying. Right now, the truck is not part of this assessed value and your appeal. I mean.
My appeal was that our accountant never filed yearly, so that we went up twenty-five percent.
Every year.
Every year that he didn't file. So I, I reassessed what we had and I sent it in and to my understanding, the truck was what put us over our automatically assessed value. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're all on the same page. I'm, I'm happy to pay whatever we owe, but I want to make sure that we're clear and we're on the same page.
Well, you're, you're claiming three thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars in assessed. Value on, on the personal property, all right? Today, but if you backed up four years and put twenty-five percent on all of that, you're at eight thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. Again, your tax liability to clean this mess up is two hundred and thirty-six dollars. All right, I don't think you want to bring the truck. I don't, you know, the, and right now, the truck's not part of this. I don't, not sure. You know, if, if you want to do something about the truck.
I don't want to do anything with the truck. I received the call from.
Right, Mr. Jackson, we're not really doing anything with the truck either, right? Are we, or, or are we not in this appeal?
Not in the eighty-one hundred and ten dollar assessment, no.
No. So. I'm, I'm gonna, you know. You know, have the board make a motion to, you know, ba, based upon the recommendation of the assessor's office, that your current assessment is eight thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. For, for a price of two hundred and thirty-six, yeah, you know, taxes.
Okay, my, my only thing was I received the phone call from the tax assessor's office saying this truck brought up all of our tax value, our, our personal property value. And to contest that, that's why I'm here. I'm, I'm happy to pay the two hundred and thirty-six dollars. I, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not being overcharged for a crappy truck that we have. That's all.
Uh, I, I.
I'm happy to.
Don't see that here, right, Mr. Jackson?
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. I, uh. I would take a no change and, and pay the tax bill and.
Mr. Jackson, Mr. Chairman, board members, I appreciate your time. I'm happy to pay the two hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Do I hear a motion?
A motion. Uh, to make no change.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hey.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, from the town.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Has anybody been keeping track? Is that, is that everybody?
That is everybody, Mr. Chairman.
Ruth Harris, uh, did she have two pieces of property or one?
Well, it was one property, but there were two names on the appeal, so it's, it's all done. The one.
Okay.
Appeal with two names.
Okay. All right, so I guess the next. The next meeting is, uh.
Monday.
Monday, Wednesday of next week? Do we need Thursday and Saturday of next week, or you don't know?
Yeah, I believe we do, yes.
And Saturday?
Correct.
Okay.
We're trying to avoid, we were trying to avoid the Saturday and things spilled over. And I'm a little bit confused because like tonight's agenda, I thought was rather light. We could have gone another hour or so. But.
Yeah.
That's what we're working with at this point.
Yeah, that's, um. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, you know. Rereading the schedule. Whatever, whatever, however. It gets scheduled is, is okay with me, you know?
Right. My understanding is all the dates that we selected are full.
Okay. Even into the, even into the third week, the, the, uh. I mean, we have seven more, seven more meetings. Are we gonna, are we full in seven meetings? are we full in seven meetings?
I believe so, why don't you call me in the office, you know, tomorrow and I'll confirm everything? Uh, my understanding is yes, now what I've done is I've settled quite a few.
Okay.
Uh, so we've, we've collapsed several of them, you know, to reduce the, the, reduce a couple of those agendas. But then what I'm doing is I'm gonna fill in with other properties that were over a million dollars that have now been resolved.
Okay. Whatever, whatever the scheduling is, you, you know, um, you want to do, I just.
And, and you know what, Mr. Chairman?
The only thing I can say is, some of the personal property takes a little bit longer than, than maybe a residential, something like that, that you give us enough time to work through some of these because they're a little harder sometimes to explain and, and work.
But I just, I just thought of it, Shelley's on the line, I mean, she's, she's got all the agendas, she could speak to the question better than I could.
Okay.
Um, I do, I do not have the agendas with me right now. But, um, all of the dates are pretty well booked, Saturday is very light, so maybe would take an hour.
Okay.
Perhaps there's not a lot on Saturday, but after that, I mean, there's like a hundred and ninety-four cases, appeals.
Total for the, really?
Yes.
So what are we, we're, uh, one, two, three, four, five? About fifteen a night? About ten nights, yeah? Ten, ten, okay, I mean, uh, again, whatever, whatever it takes, uh, is fine, Saturday morning is, is fine, um, you know, doing it from home certainly is efficient, you know, timing wise.
I can provide virtual coffee and donuts, Mr. Chairman. If that'll help.
Great for my diet. Okay, well, thank you, um, you know, uh, I think we're, we're ironing out some bugs still, but, uh, I think we're, we're doing all right virtually here. So.
We're good.
All right, so do I hear a motion? Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you, see you next time. Take care.